The roster and I'll tabulate votes and then we'll go from there. So with that said, item number four is approval of the minutes in special call rescheduled and regular scheduled city council meeting for May twenty-sixth of two thousand and twenty. Recommended action is to approve the minutes to have a motion. So move. A motion made by Joiner, seconded by Knight. Where's that wire? All right, is there any discussion on the matter? Being on, I'm going to ask for the vote. Clerk?
Councilman Knight?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joiner?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Daughtry?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
And Miller?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Item five is consideration of the minutes and recommendations from the special call committee of the whole meeting held on May twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty to discuss council relations and future projects. Recommended action is to approve the minutes. Do I have a motion to do so? Moved by Blackwell, seconded by Daughtry. Is there any need for discussion? Being on, I'll call for a voice vote again.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joiner?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Daughtry?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
And Miller?
Yes.
And motion passed unanimously. Item six is consideration of the minutes and recommendations from the budget review sessions. Recommended action is to approve the minutes, approve removal, storage, Confederate statue currently at Battle Park, and through resolution, and to adopt resolution against racial injustice and declaration that black lives matter. So move. Moved by Knight, seconded by Joiner. Is there any need for discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote.
Yes. Go on, tide it up.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joiner?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Daughtry?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
And Miller?
Yes.
Okay, item passes. One to send me by, Councilman Bullock. Item seven is our community update, provided by Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My update is as follows. First, the Parks and Recreation Department is proud to announce the return of its annual summer camps. Sessions are open to children ages five through twelve and will be held at two sites, the Imperial Center for the Arts and Sciences and the Booker T. Washington Community Center. Camps will run June the twenty-second through July thirty-first, Monday through Friday from seven-thirty a.m. to six o'clock p.m. Camps are limited to fifty children per site. Please register in person at the Booker T. Washington Community Center or South Rocky Mountain Community Center. You may also call two-five-two-four-six-seven-four-nine-two-five-four-two-five-two-nine-seven-two-one-one-six-nine for more information. All commission and board meetings remain canceled during this time. Also of note, the two thousand and twenty-Juneeenth empowerment festival, Downtown Live, and lawn chair theater series are postponed until further notice. The City of Rocky Mountain is a sponsor of Downtown Cares, a local nonprofit initiative designed to support seniors and essential workers with meals and more via, via the local small businesses during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Orders are taken each Tuesday by five o'clock p.m. for meals to be delivered on Wednesdays. If you are interested in supporting the initiative, visit downtownrockymountainnc.com for more information. We know that this is a tough time for a lot of residents with layoffs and furloughs. As a reminder, per the council's direction, as well as a pair of executive orders from our governor, there is a moratorium on all utility dislocations until further notice, and late fees will not be assessed during this time. If you are in need of help with your bill, please contact the Business Services Center at two-five-two-nine-seven-two-one-two-five-zero. The City of Rocky Mountain is partnering with the Central Food Bank of Eastern and Central North Carolina and Sanosun Farms on a COVID-nineteen food distribution campaign to aid our residents experiencing food shortages. The location and time will be released in the next couple of days. Starting June first, applications for the Residential Facade Improvement Grant Program will be accepted. The program administered through the Human Relations Department will offer eligible homeowners in designated areas of the city the opportunity to beautify residential property facades. The program provides for a grant of up to five thousand dollars, and matching funds are not required. Contact the Human Relations Department at two-five-two-nine-seven-two-one-one-eight-one or visit rockymountainnc.gov to find a list of eligibility standards and to obtain an application. Finally, during this time, it is important to remember to fill out and send in your two thousand and twenty census form. The census will determine funding for housing programs, schools, hospitals, economic development, and much more in our community. You can respond online, by phone, or by mail. For more information or to respond, visit two thousand and twenty census dot duh. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Manager.
I have a question.
Yes, sir. I acknowledge Councilman Knight and then Councilman Miller.
Under six, consideration of minutes and recommendation for budget review, recommended action number three, adopt resolution against racial injustice and declaration that black lives matter. Do you plan to read that resolution into the minutes?
I just want to ask, or request.
Well, the answer to the question is, yes, I generally do. I don't have it in front of me.
Okay. My request I was going to make, can you present it to the young people of this city?
Sure.
Perhaps at the next meeting or the first meeting in July?
Sure.
And that way we have a formal reading and you'd have a nice resolution to present as we've done in many others.
Okay.
And I think would be fitting, that's my perspective, be fitting, to present to the young people who mobilized this whole city.
Sounds good.
So please, you, Councilman Knight?
It would please me if you would read the first and then the therefore.
Okay, very well. Councilman Miller?
I would change the subject, right?
You had asked for the floor and I'm providing you the floor.
Okay, thank you. I had a follow-up question to the city manager's update. I just wanted to be sure we were finished with the subject of the proclamation. Okay, hearing nothing else answered, that's the case. With regard to the summer camps that are going forward, yet our boards and commissions will not be meeting, I would just like some explanation for that. I understand that the parents need the summer camps for the young people, but we're much more able, I would think, to control the attendance at boards and commissions and there's work to be done by those boards, so how would we not move forward with them, even if by video?
I think if that's the consensus of the council for the commission and board meetings to start up again, then I will await that direction. But at this time, because City Hall still remains closed under the city, under the governor's orders, as well as the chambers, we're just continuing on until that changes.
Recurrent.
Well, I would order the date when we can resume them, even if by video.
Thank you, Councilman Miller. I'll read in the resolution for Against Racial Injustice Declaration of Black Lives Matter. Whereas Black Lives Matter is an international human rights movement that stands against violence and systemic racism towards black people, whereas the Rocky Mountain City Council believes black lives matter, and until the entire world believes black lives matter, no lives matter. Whereas George Floyd, an African-American man, died on May twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty, while handcuffed and lying face down on a city street in Minneapolis, Minnesota, during an arrest when a white police officer held his knee on the right side of Floyd's neck for eight minutes and forty-six seconds. And whereas according to the criminal complaint against the police officer, he kept his knee on Floyd's neck for two minutes and fifty-three seconds after Floyd became unresponsive. And whereas two other police officers participated in Floyd's arrest holding his black back, his back and legs while a third police officer stood looking on. And whereas an independent autopsy commissioned by Floyd's family found with his death was a homicide caused by asphyxia due to neck and back compression that led to lack of blood flow to the brain. Whereas several bystanders recorded the event on their smartphones with at least one video showing Floyd repeating, please, I can't breathe. And whereas the following day, all four police officers were fired, only the officer kneeling on Floyd's neck has been charged with third degree murder and second degree manslaughter. And whereas mass demonstrations have erupted across the country in protest of an outrage for the senseless death of George Floyd, and to draw attention to the ongoing systemic issue of police violence and racial injustice. And whereas many people across the country of every race have expressed frustration, helplessness, unrest, and anger against police violence and racial injustice. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "There comes a time when silence is betrayal, and our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter." Now therefore, be it resolved by the City of Rocky Mountain City Council that black lives matter, and be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Rocky Mountain stands firm against racism and racial inequality in support of justice for all. Adopted this eighth day of June, two thousand and twenty. Science C. Suckers Robertson, Jr., mayor.
Mr. Mayor, we might need to amend it because now all four police officers have been charged.
I think that's appropriate, but I'll give a motion of vote, okay?
So move.
Moved by Councilman Knight, seconded by Joiner. I'll ask, we'll call, voice call, vote.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joiner?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Daughtry?
Yes.
And Miller?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Bullock, sorry.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Now we are at item eight, which is petitions received from the public. I'd like to remind everyone that this is not to be personally directed toward any member of council, and that we are not required to answer questions that may be brought before us. This should be conducted civilly, and that you will have three minutes to express your opinion. With that said, I'll call individual number one, which is Jerry McCroy.
This is my best retirement card. My name is Jerry McCroy. I'm from Winterville, North Carolina, and neighbor in Pitt County. I called at this point, and I'm in Pitt County Council, so that's why I'm here. I'm an eastern North Caroler, native, born in Pitt County, raised in Pitt County, was a farm boy, and went in the army, served three years, saw a lot of things overseas. Back here, went into business. I need to do one thing, start my phone charger, because I bet you guys are tired of it.
Right here, sir.
Oh, cool, all right, thank you. So once I went into business world, eventually I worked my way into a situation where I moved up north. I was in Massachusetts for three years, and New Jersey, New York, for twelve years, fifteen years. Along that time, I saw a lot of things. But in part my educational process, I needed a history credit for one of my degrees, and so I watched the Ken Burns series on the Civil War. I knew about the Civil War, but didn't know that much about it. So after watching the Ken Burns series on some of the sacrifices of people from all sides of the conflict, it put me more in the mind of being proud of my southern ancestors that fought in that war. They came out on the losing side, I understand that. But I think nowadays, when we look at racism, being in New Jersey and New York, in February of ninety-nine, Hamadou Diallo was shot in New York City by four off-duty policemen. He lived in the Bronx in New York City. There are no Confederate statues, to my knowledge, in Bronx. In July of two thousand and fourteen, Eric Garner was put in the shuttle and lost his life. Again, a gang of police ganged up on him. As far as I know, he lived in Staten Island, there are no Confederate statues in Staten Island. So racism exists across a large area, every corner of our country, I think, we're going to some, what kind of statues are there? I believe now, when the word comes up that a statue is being challenged, people vandalize it, whatever the case may be, I believe that the worst behavior on both sides comes out over that issue. I do not know how the best way to address that, but I do believe that removing statues and memorials, especially to dead soldiers, is not the way to bring equality to all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Randy Adcox.
Greetings to you all, Randy Adcox, thirty-two, twelve, on Halifax Road. After viewing the video footage of the recent budget meeting, I have to say I was sad and disappointed by what I saw and what I heard. I was sad that the county, some disrespectful way of genuine historical artifact is being treated by this body, and I was disappointed to see such a blatant disregard for the laws of this state. As I said many times when asking about this and other monuments and similar artifacts, our country's history belongs to no one individual, no governing body, no special legal group. This body has no right, no moral authority, and frankly, no reason to remove this monument, other than a pursuit of personal agenda by some members of this council. Two years ago, there were four public meetings initiated and paid for by this city with the intent to gain public sentiment regarding the monument. As some of you know, I attended all four meetings. The results of those four meetings at a cost of some forty thousand dollars to the city taxpayers came to one unmistakable conclusion: The vast majority of the citizens of this city simply do not care. Leave it up, take it down, they do not care. It makes no sense to spend this kind of taxpayer money to remove this monument. And frankly, there are those, I understand, who disagree with my position. There are those who want it taken down. They do not represent the majority of this city. They are a loud and vocal group, I understand that, but they do not represent the majority of citizens of this city. Frankly, I would fight just as hard to save the monument erected in honor of Marcus the King, Frederick Douglass, or the Longest Monk. I'm not a racist, I'm not a white supremacist, I have no desire to cause harm or discontent to anyone else, I'm just a simple man trying to preserve history. I realize my speaking to you tonight has no chance of changing anyone's mind, and that's okay. I'd like to thank Councilmember Bullock, through your courageous vote at the meeting. I'd like to ask the favor of the rest of you. Going forward, can you at least be honest with the citizens of this city? If you want to see this monument relocated, then state that publicly and support that endeavor. On the other hand, if you desire to see it be destroyed, be honest with the citizens of this city and state that publicly as well. If you intend to spend taxpayer money to pursue this move, then the very least you can do is be honest about your intentions and your motivations. We have an opportunity here to lead the state and indeed the country with the path laid forth regarding Confederate monuments. We can show the rest of the state and the rest of the country that we prefer to preserve our historical artifacts rather than destroy them. If the plan is to move this monument, then let's do it right. Let's find a suitable location to move it to, and then let's take it down and move it to that new location. Let's not let it be destroyed by those who pretend to have no appreciation for history at all, and let's not stick it in a warehouse somewhere and pretend it no longer exists. The entire state is watching us now, and we don't want to mess this up. We can come to a mutually agreeable outcome regarding this.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Have a good night.
Calling Jackie King.
I am Jackie King. I reside at one-twenty-two Daines Avenue in the Valberg Community in the City of Rocky Mountain, North Carolina. I also serve as the first vice chair of the Rocky Mountain branch of the NAACP, and that's why I'm here tonight. As you know, the NAACP was founded on February twelfth, nineteen oh nine, the nation's oldest, boldest, largest, and most widely recognized grassroots civil rights back organization. The mission of the NAACP is to ensure the political, educational, social, and economic equality of all persons and to eliminate racial hatred and racial discrimination. Also, our national brother then, Dr. David Johnson, is CEO of the NAACP. He's put out a statement on Confederate symbols. White supremacists is personalized in these monuments. Classes, neo-Nazis, white nationalists, defend them as the innocent reputation of American heritage. But we know that these symbols glorify treason and a hateful history of white supremacy and black subjugation. In order for our country to move forward, to become a nation united and free, I'm going to say it again, in order for our country to move forward, to become a nation united and free from inequality and bigotry, we must remove and not protect Confederate symbols in parks, schools, streets, counties, cities, and military bases. Just, I didn't realize that to this day, that Marines still had a Confederate flag. It's sad. These monuments are not history, and its continued presence in this country is stinking to people of color that are murdered. It's not, it's not replicated racism. My personal opinion is, as fore-stated, if you don't like it, you mean you're racist. If you don't want to remove it, you still got rights, you still got that hate, and they read about the cost. My forefathers already paid the cost. What if we remove it? We don't pay the cost. As a people, we have paid the cost, and it's time to take it down all over this land and country, all over the world, Matt F. Franch. So if you're not, if you want to own the United States by taking it down, I salute you. The reason that some people, I talk to people there at work, they ask me about it, a lot of people, they want to say because of their family. I understand, but what about our families? We went through a lot, so think about it. If you want to correct what's going on in the world today and fight instead of understanding what they fought for, then fight to correct the ramifications that the hatred has caused us, unless you embody what the legacy of enslavement and just hurt and shame to the American people. It's time to take your leave of Alex. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. Let's call Robert Carl, I believe. Carl?
Robert Carl, Rocky Mountain. I have a question about this statue. How much is it going to cost to take that thing down and move it somewhere besides just a warehouse? Or is it just going to be put in a warehouse and stay there until everybody forgets about it? And I was reading in a, on the online, there are four places that have taken down statues, and it seems like the price was anywhere from three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to half a million dollars. And I'm sure the city is going to pay for that with tax, but I'm like, correct? Yeah, I'm sure they are. I think it's kind of disgraceful to pay that kind of money for something that ain't hurting anybody. Have a good day.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Mr. Bronson Williams to the stand. Stand, put it in.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I think this gentleman, whether we know it or not, pretty much threatened us with the gesture, amongst other. So I would advise our attorney and our chief of police to deal with this situation and ban this person from this hall chambers. The gesture that this man just made, Robert Carl, put a finger to his head to our city manager, it needs to be dealt with immediately, right now, at seven-thirty-seven p.m., right now.
And again, I just want to say, Mr.
Is our chief here?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say.
Thank you.
That we just passed a resolution about black lives matter, and for a white gentleman to come here and confront our manager and make those gestures is unacceptable. We would not put up with that.
I totally agree.
Thank you.
I didn't see the gesture. That being the case, it's the chief of police talking to Mr. Pruney. I don't know that we can ban him forever, but I think we certainly have a conversation.
He needs to change his manner of behavior. Nobody here is subjugated anymore.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Williams?
Good evening to the mayor and council. First, I want to thank you for voting to remove the Confederate monument. That was both an act of courage and one of common sense. The climate in our nation currently is so anti-status quo. We live in a world that is so anti-black that even when blacks speak words of inclusion, it seems to make people feel excluded. As a black man living in America, I know what it's like to be excluded simply because of the color of my skin and the stereotypes associated with it. I feel the heart of America, when one says, "Black lives matter," and in an angry tone, another says, "All lives matter." I have not seen, nor do I believe, that only black lives matter, but rather, America must know that black lives matter too. Let's be real, black lives matter is just a middle. Black lives are worthy, beloved, and black lives are needed. Black people wake up every day, know another lives matter, but what about our black lives? The Confederate monument is a symbol of white supremacy that came to further gentrile laws to marginalize blacks by denying us life. When a black person is denied the right to vote, education, health access, and economic benefit, ultimately, America in its richness has denied and still denies today the people of color life. Those monuments are reminders of those who knew their history, that the South shall rise again. It was and is a bold statement of people of color to know your place. Dr. King believed just as St. Augustine, that unjust law is not a law at all. Dr. King from the Birmingham jail called, Dr. King from the Birmingham jail said, "One has not only the legal, but a moral responsibility to obey just laws, and conversely, one has the moral responsibility to disobey unjust laws." While the Piers, North Carolina, allows political subdivisions to move objects, such as the Confederate monument, to preserve the object, I ask the City Council to urge all elected members of the General Assembly to quickly act on House Bill Ten, that still sits in the Committee of House and Rules, Counselants, and Operations of the House, six lines that totally repeal the two thousand and fifteen unjust law dealing with Confederate monuments. In closing, removing the monument does not erase history, there are scars, wounds, and grays that shall ever be present. Removing the Confederate monument only reaffirms that we are sitting not beholden to the southern ideas of white supremacy, but rather, we subscribe to the moral obligation of human rights. In tribute to Spike Lee, I ask, I encourage the City Council to keep doing the right thing.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. I'd call Mr. Anthony Pittman, Jr. Put it in.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Anthony Pittman, and I stand before you today for Breonna Taylor, George Floyd, George Floyd, sorry, David McCady, and countless others who have lost their lives to racist police officers. And I, admittingly, I know that not all police officers are racist, that wasn't ever the case, but the truth of the matter is that a lot of them are. I also stand before you for my grandparents, one who was born in nineteen thirty-two, two in nineteen forty-five, and one in nineteen forty-two. I give you these dates in particular because the same things that are happening now happened then. And just as then, our cries are unseen, our pain is unheard, and no one does anything. We are asking that you remove the monument because it is a constant reminder of what was pillaged upon our people, and that has been passed down from generation to generation. In closing, I would like to leave you with two things. One, slavery never ended, it just shifted. And two, I pledge allegiance to the red, black, and green, which means nothing to America and to the oppression for which it's never seen. Black nation, under God, be indivisible, and our oppressor shall fall. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pittman. I'd call, or Lisa Nelson, to the, put it in. Dr. Nelson?
Good evening. I'm going to be brief about the monument, since you guys have gone over that. It's obvious that this is a monument to something that was a treasonous act of rebellion, and it's ironic to me that the concerned citizens that support this, but were so vehemently a Confederate flag, a Confederate monument that was a symbol of slavery, states' rights to have slaves, ban slavery, but yet we can't peacefully protest by kneeling. So, the next issue that you guys have is the resolution. And I would say that black lives don't matter if there's no black economics. And in this current climate of people now finally seeing the light, or whatever it is that they're doing with George Floyd, since this has been going on since time in the war, the current generosity of corporations and industry, that this town, that is majority black, make a concerted effort to capture some of that money for economics in the black community, the black community. Because the black community doesn't need another handout, another hand up. It doesn't need rehabilitation, it doesn't need prayers or thoughts, what it needs is economic independence and power. And that's land ownership, business ownership, and the ability to decide for yourself what is important to your community. So, I tasked the city council and the city mayor to go get that money and help build black downtown Rocky Mountain and the entire black community, because when the black community in Rocky Mountain rises, everyone in Rocky Mountain will rise. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nelson. I'd like to ask, Sanja Thomas to the podium. Did I get that right?
Hello, my name is Nastaja Thomas, and I am one of the co-founders of the unmuted organization. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, with liberty and justice for all. The dictionary defines liberty as the state of being free, but liberty involves much more. Rather our heritage, liberty means to not be owned or enslaved by a person or power physically and mentally. Popular pastor and author John Ortberg once said, "Real freedom is not the external freedom to gratify every appetite, but it is the internal freedom to not be enslaved by your own appetite." In other words, truly what you call on us to express ourselves with civility and respect the rights of those who think differently should do the same. In nineteen sixty-three, President John F. Kennedy delivered the Civil Rights Agreement. Now, civil rights are the rights of citizens to political and social freedom. If we are citizens of America, black people, then why do we need rights to political and social freedom? Well, that's because we were never intended to be classified as citizens of America. Furthermore, within this speech, Kennedy states, "One hundred years of delay has passed since President Lincoln freed the slaves, yet their heirs, their grandsons, aren't fully free. They are not yet free from the bond of injustice, and they are not yet free from social and economic oppression, and this nation, with all its hopes and all its boasts, will never be fully free until all citizens are free." In twenty-twenty, how are all citizens going to be free if the purpose of the Confederate monuments was established to be a reminder of white supremacy? We have to remove the idea that of white superiority, the "I am better because I am white," because that produces black inferiority. These monuments are a constant reminder that although slave owners are no more, their genes still run deep, deep within the veins of their white children. Since nineteen seventeen, this statue has been here, it was long dead and it is long now. And we came to here today to tell you, we want to understand and let you remind us of the horrific darkest moments of black lives. We will rise above the undignifying, manipulative, ignominious monument that is high in this populace. If we are citizens of America, citizens of Rocky Mountain, North Carolina, then treat us and respect our demands as you would a white man's demands. These monuments represent separation in a time where nations need to be united, to be in a black body, walking through the streets of Rocky Mountain, North Carolina, and to see something that signifies the enslaver of my people is simply infuriating. Not only does this statue need to be removed, it needs to be demolished, not just moved to some crowded location. Now, I will leave you today with this question, if we are one nation, under God, indivisible, then why glorify spectacle that divides this nation? Thank you.
Thank you. I'd ask, Mr. George Wicker to the podium.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for giving me a few minutes to speak to you. I could not hear the preachers speakers, I could hear a little bit of what the lady was saying, and she was a very eloquent speaker, made a lot of very good points. I'm not here to disagree with her, I'm here to ask you to basically stop and think a minute about what you're doing, put on the brakes if you need to. This issue about the monument just came up in a committee meeting, as I understand it, last Tuesday, and now it's on the calendar tonight. I don't know if there's been any public discussion of it, and whoever other than me has had a few minutes to talk about it. It's a very important issue, it needs to be thoroughly discussed, talked about, pros and the cons. A lot of people that I've talked to, excuse me wanting to be here, but because of the virus, they're reluctant to get around crowds, everybody I've talked to raises questions that I don't know the answer to, and I don't know if you know the answer to. Why, why is it such a rush to do this? What is the imminent event out there that has, requires this to be done right now? Why can't a committee be formed to talk about this? What are the alternatives? How much is it gonna cost to move the statue? Where you gonna move it to? Where you gonna store it? For how long are you gonna store it? Once that statue gets in storage, you know, I know, we all know what's gonna happen. That's where it's gonna start. Why not move it one time? If that's the ultimate plan, to move it somewhere else, why not drop back, take your time, find out a suitable place to put it? Move it one time, not twice, that solves the problem. I grew up on Falls Road, I've been by that statue, I went back and counted nine thousand nine hundred and fifty times, I've been by that statue. Not once, not once, from the time I was five or six years old, older enough to have a thought, that I never think of anything other than, there's a nice statue, I never thought of white supremacy, white superiority. That's the furthest thing from my mind. If any of you read by there lately, I invite you to do that. It's very hard to see, I don't know any way you can put it where it would be any less conspicuous, surrounded on three sides by trees taller than the monument. Unless you're right directly in front of it. You must not be driving, 'cause you're going around a curve. Unless you're right directly in front of it-
Thank you, Ms. Wicker.
-you cannot see it. Like y'all.
I'd like to ask Maureen Manges to the podium.
Maureen Manges, twenty-two, twenty North Wesleyan Boulevard. It was further down my wrist, but I kinda would like to say something about what that man just said. Once upon a time, when I came to Rocky Mountain, about forty-seven years ago, I really saw that monument, and I also saw the four smaller statues that were on the corner, and I really didn't, of course, I'm Caucasian, I didn't have any terrible feelings about it, I just thought it was a pretty nice, good-looking statue. I'm sorry if I had darker skin, I would feel suppressed, or I had bad thoughts about it, but the little statues are gone, the big one at the top is like, what, forty feet up? Can something like that really bring back terrible memories of something that you weren't even involved in as of a citizen today? And it really kills me, how much money is it gonna cost to remove that thing? I have heard that there are children living on the street, living in cars, they can't, their parents, or a parent, or whoever they live with, can't afford to give them lunch on the weekends, so people have to give them bags. Why don't we work about those poor kids? Not something that is a burden yourself. Now, I was gonna start with saying, could I have a show of hands who was born, who were born in Rocky Mountain? But I'm sure y'all don't do that, and of course, you're not gonna tell me if you've been here more than forty-five years. And I would like to know who has the best interest of Rocky Mountain in their heart, not the best interest of their pockets. And who owns the formerly known school Booker T. Washington High School? Who uses it? In the paper, it said it started with twenty thousand dollars to fix it up, now it's up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars? You people must have a heck of a bigger bank account than that, 'cause that's a lot of money for what? I mean, who uses that? Whoever uses it, they need to keep it up, not me. The trash can, I mean, the trash truck came and busted up some, seen it at the back of my shop, and I asked the city if they could help pay for that, and they said, "No, big trucks coming, they're the ones that did it." Number one, I got a framing shop, I don't have any big trucks. Number two, why, if the way they were doing it didn't mess it up, how come the dusty, uh, the trash guy, big truck, now comes in the yard?
Thank you, Ms. Manges. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd call Jen to the podium.
Hello, my name is Jen, I'm a member of the Black Action Committee. Slavery is not black history, it's America's history. Here in Rocky Mountain, we are constantly reminded of the pain and suffering that our grandparents have endured for centuries. The memories that spawned from the Confederate monument is as painful today as it was in the past. Here in Rocky Mountain, we live peaceful among each other. Aside from all the trauma and injustice we blacks have experienced, we are not prejudiced against white people. We embrace all ethnicities with love and respect, considering the fact that our ancestors were stolen from their native land, forced ownership, forced into hard labor, starved, beaten, sold for cash, and helped build a country that they have to fight for rights in. I personally don't think we are asking for too much when we say, "Take down the Confederate monument on Battle Park." I once came across an article wrote by Miles Parks in twenty-seventeen, called Confederate States Were Built to Further a White Supremacy's Future. In this article, Parks states that majority of Confederate memorials were not built to honor fallen soldiers, but to further white supremacy. According to my research, over thirty cities have removed Confederate monuments, and Rocky Mountain should do the same. I am asking the committee to acknowledge the people in this town, stop ignoring our history, and request for change. The monument may represent history to white people, but for blacks, it represents over four hundred years of fears, tears, torture, abuse, rape, and inequality. In conclusion, the monument separates us, and that's not how we live today. Let the past be the past, and let's start a new future. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. I'd like to call Steve White to the podium.
Hey.
Hey.
Hey, how's it going? Hope y'all blessed. Um, so today, I'm here to talk about why the Confederate monument should be taken down, I just, when, when I was given this assignment to write something, I was really upset, 'cause I couldn't understand why there had to be a discussion about it. And I backed that with my facts being, there are no statues of Hitler in general, and there's reasons behind that, and also, if it's not taken down, I would also understand. But this is the thing, for me, it represents something that's much deeper than the statue. So, I feel it should be taken down because of what it stands for, on a much deeper level than just the Confederate statue. And that's all I yield my time to.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'll ask Mike Parker to the podium.
Good afternoon, members of the council. I would just like to start and say that our city slogan is, "Rocky Mountain, City on the Rise." But I truly feel that how can we be a city on the rise if all of our people aren't rising together, with all of us? We have anchors that prevent us from moving forward to a better, brighter future, and I do believe that removing this statue will help alleviate that problem. It is history, yes, should we forget it? No. We should not be celebrating or honoring the Confederacy they lost. You don't see Germany celebrating the Nazis and their past and being Nazis. These monuments should be removed from public sight and placed in a museum where people can go and learn about the past, as they should, not in public viewing while going to church, coming from church, or going to the movies, or going to the Battle Park. Yes, remember it, yes, understand what was happened, sorry, what happened, remember what parts was played by where, who, when, and that statue only breeds white supremacy's pride, which I am completely against. And more importantly, it incites anger and pain for those whose ancestors were oppressed and are still being oppressed to this day, even if it's not the same type, but it is oppression. We had the most famous civil rights leader talk here and preview a speech that every person in this room knows about. That man was Martin Luther King Jr., who previewed his speech, "I Have a Dream," here in Rocky Mountain, this city, nine months before he delivered that speech in our state's capital, I'm sorry, in our state's capital, but our country's capital, our nation's capital. That is history worth being proud of. I am white, I'm not a person of color, I cannot stand here and tell you every single emotion and struggle others go through, but I do see the pain, I see the suffering, I hear it, I feel for them. The injustices going on is completely against cause for in our nation, we're free on this, our main thing. I know it's not right, and I know that we have to do something about this, we have to have these painful talks, we have to have these painful discussions, or else we'll never be able to move forward. How else will the rights and the wrongs, sorry, how else will we right the wrongs of my ancestors? I want my brothers and sisters, my friends, my neighbors, my family, and my strangers that I haven't even met yet, I want them to feel safe in this city, like I do when I go walking, or when I drive my car, or when I go to the movie theaters. There are many things that need fixing in this country, even in the state and in this city. Snuffing the flame that is racism is among the top. Four hundred years of oppression does not disappear overnight, and the stains are everywhere to be seen. Thank you, and I yield my time.
Thank you. I'd like to ask, Mr. Wicker to the podium. I'm sorry.
My case is a topic. My name is Sam Wicker, I have grown up here, I'm from Arkansas, my dad grew up in, I remember this right now, and I really shouldn't be, because this is my city, and this is your city, and we're all members of one community, and community, the impact of community can't be put into words, it's- And community, the impact of community can't be put into words, it's... I've always felt history, since I can't even remember. And just this small level of care that I'm feeling, I know friends of mine that I love feel every day, just because they're black. And that's unacceptable. And this monument isn't a matter of history anymore. Maybe at one time it was, but as a community, this is doing more harm than good. And as we transition out of high school, into the real world, we learn, history is a lot different than what we were told. And we start experiencing, people have been writing down since ancient times, the Greeks. We're still writing about it today. We still don't have answers for everything. But injustice is injustice. And truth is individual. And people think history is truth, when it rarely is. And our truth right now is being shouted across the nation, across the world. The truth is, this doesn't need to be here. It's, it's not right. It's time to focus on other parts of history, and it's time to focus on moving forward. And this is a divider. This is separating us, when we need to be building each other up and uniting and loving one another, and this is destroying us.
Thank you.
See you later.
I'd like to ask Rihanna Pace to the podium.
Hello, my name is Rihanna Pace, and I cannot teach you morality in three minutes. And to me, the bottom line of this discussion is not about plurality, I mean, it's not about opinion, it is about plurality. You can have an opinion on movies and music, not about racism. Just imagine for a moment that you're a young black person walking to the park. I know that's hard for some of us, impossible, because we will never know what people of color feel or experience. But you're walking to the park. To get there and back home safely, you could face so much. The last thing you need to be worried about is the heaviness your heart will feel walking past a monument that is a symbol of racism. For anyone here who believes that it is heritage and not hate, you're wrong. It is history, I can't argue with that, but it is hate as well. Black men didn't willingly fight for the Confederates. They were given an ultimatum, "Fight or die." And they weren't fighting for their freedom, they were fighting for the right, for Southerners to own and buy human beings, their sons and daughters. That isn't freedom, that doesn't sound like the freedom brave to me. If you're worried about the statue, understand that in today's society, it's safer elsewhere. There aren't statues of Hitler, Nazis out and about in Germany, but there is a Holocaust museum. History should be seen and heard with honesty, not racism and oppression. The monument is an eyesore in our community, and it has blood on its bronze and marble hands. And it's past time for it to go. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'd like to have Eben Curtis come to the podium.
We always say, "Those who don't learn about history are doomed to repeat it." And that's completely true. We learn about the world wars, slavery, and segregation in schools, so that we know not to repeat those violent and unfair times. However, we do not need a monument to learn about or even remember our history. By definition, a monument is a statue, building, or other structure erected to commemorate a famous or notable person or event, Oxford Languages. Were the core beliefs of the Confederacy notable? Was the loss of the Confederacy such that its leaders should be glorified? Robert E. Lee, a commander of the Confederate States Army in the Civil War, even said, "I think it is wiser not to, not to keep open the source of war, but to follow the example of those nations who endeavored to obliterate the marks of civil strife." The Confederate monument in Rocky Mount was created to commemorate those who fought for keeping people of color as slaves. It commemorates those who saw them as possessions. How embarrassing is it to be a city of which more than sixty percent of our people identify as black and display a symbol praising those who owned and tortured ancestors of the current citizens of our beautiful Rocky Mount? German students still learn about the horrible effects of World War II in their classrooms. But there are no statues in Germany glorifying Hitler and the Nazis because they would represent a time in history when their country not only lost a war, but a time where their people perished solely due to their heritage. How is this different? We can understand history without having to drive by it every single day. This monument that stands tall on Rocky Mount was not even created right after the Civil War. It was created in nineteen seventeen, along with many other racist monuments, to suppress the power of people of color. Jim Carole's began to permeate American society in the late nineteenth century and went on until the middle of the twentieth century. Many mon, many monuments, just like the one in question, were erected during this time of racism. By leaving it up, the leaders of Rocky Mount are saying that glorifying a racist past is more important than standing with our black neighbors who make up this city. As recent events have highlighted, the disparities that still exist within American society, spending precious resources on this monument is concerning, as there are so many other needs in our communities that are far more pressing. But removal of this monument is critical, because it shows a dedicated first step to ending racial inequity. This would examine our city's leadership to erase old prejudice and replace it with empathetic growth. This would not even be the bare minimum. Taking away a hateful symbol is just the first step. The leaders of Rocky Mount must be America's example of justice for all. The whole world is watching, and we are uniquely poised to manifest the steps that need to be taken in our own communities and throughout this nation to give opportunity to all. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Nea Barner to come to the podium.
The Confederate statue must be removed from its primary location because it glorifies slavery, rape, murder, and the oppression of my ancestors, things that should not represent Rocky Mount, the city on the rise. For black, for years, black people who call this place home have been forced to see a statue that emphasizes white supremacy and a treasonous government whose main goal was to keep them slaves. Some people may argue that it is a part of our history, and we must not forget it. But for me and my fellow African-American friends, that Confederate statue represents racism, fascism, and countless tears cried by our own ancestors. I would like to see the statue be removed from its current location and placed somewhere where those who wish to glorify it can, but not in an area where it's constantly seen by those who are deeply offended by it. I yield my time.
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask Sydney, is it Meeks or Marks? Meeks, to the podium.
Hello, everyone. I'm here, I'm the head of the Rocky Mount Black Action Committee. And I'll be stating a statement, um, for my brother in the movement, Leif Darden. The Confederate monument in Rocky Mount must come down. The Confederate monuments all over this country must come down. The Confederacy was established to preserve a singular institution, state sovereignty, but more specifically, the larger tenet of that state sovereignty being the right to own slaves. The Constitution of the Confederate States of America makes several mentions of the need for the law to preserve the legal status of slavery. We can remember our his, our history without commemorating the intersection slave traders who rebelled against this great, great nation. We must never forget that those fighting for the Confederacy were fighting against the United States of America. Statues serve as commemorative tributes. Why would or should our great city honor the sacrifices of individuals fighting, one, against this great nation, and two, to preserve America's greatest original sin, slavery? I also stated at the protests that we held a couple Sundays ago that that statue represents the neck of white supremacy, racism, and systematic oppression that has been on our necks, on my, my people's necks for four hundred years. All six of you that voted to remove the monument last week, I'm holding you accountable today to do the right thing, to keep the, this city together, not divided, because we all know in this room that that statue represents nothing about great history. It's not Southern pride, it's hatred. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to ask April Davidson Carr to the podium. And apparently, some don't know, we have voted to remove the monument today, so just want to pass that out. But thoughts are still welcome, and I appreciate your position.
But just to get straight to the point and not waste too much time, I do vote to take the statue down. The statue celebrates the oppression of my people and the empowerment of the white race over all races. We can't erase our history or what our people have dealt with. But this statue symbolizes the destruction, fascism, and the overall need for one race to be superior to other races. It goes against everyone, it should go against everyone's ideal morals and codes of ethics in 2020. We've come too far for the advancement of African-Americans to be constantly reminded of our undebateable inequalities. Taking down this statue won't fix our issues, but it will show us and everyone in the community that we are not alone, that our city stays with us, and that the time is now. As a mother raising two black boys, knowing that the odds are already against them and the system is not designed for their individual advancement is heartbreaking. When I'm the one who has to teach them laws and rules and histories, knowing that even if they do everything right in life, they still won't be good enough for the people who believe that. This statue should be held in admiration and support what it represents, that they will never see them for even half of what they are alone as equivalent. I keep voting to take the statue down.
Thank you.
And I'll lie for like a minute, my time, thank you.
I'd like to ask Regina Lyons, I believe it is, is that correct? Right to the podium.
Yes, I'm here from the Rocky Mount Black Action Committee. I feel like the monument needs to be taken down, it's way overdue. It's been up over a hundred years. When I drive past the monument on Battle Park, or then, I'm intense because I know that the history of the Confederate monument, I know what has happened. The monument gave an idea, ideal that the whites are superior to blacks. When I see the statue, I remember my grandmother used to tell me the stories about the way she was treated, and how they had to sit separate from the whites. When ancestors actually sold to the white man, their voices wasn't heard. I feel, feel the city shouldn't, shouldn't have to have this statue of the cause for what has happened to our ancestors. When I see what has happened today, I see the thing that's going on, especially with our black people. They are being killed by the hands of the white police. We need to make a change in the city. It starts with the statue. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Tiana Legere, Legere? Yes, sir, Mr. Neil Mossman, Justice Reverend Neil Mossman.
Four public spaces in, in New York and eight in California have Confederate monuments, and they were not Confederate states, I just wanted to give some information. I would like to thank this council minus one for its forward thinking in voting to remove the Confederate statue at Falls Road. I would also encourage the city to officially endorse the fast track of the Pousefield Ten, which has been presented to repeal the 2015 bill that protected such monuments. I know that there has been an uproar about the removal of Rocky Mouse Monument, the primary objection. They centered around the preservation of heritage. Some are saying that the monument is a representation and memorial to the Southern legacy. I would suggest that those persons who are concerned about monuments to Southern legacy need only to look into the faces of their fellow black citizens if they need a reminder of what their legacy is and the reason their ancestors fought so hard only to lose in the end. Who erects monuments to second place? I digress. I would however like to request that the city form a law enforcement reform task force comprised of city officials, law enforcement, and citizens that could discuss best practices as is relative to policing in our community. Two, I believe that task force could explore ways to implement realistic initiatives to eradicate gun violence in our neighborhoods. A black city manager, black police chief, black fire chief, and black department heads in a majority-black city are signs of needed progress, and I am glad that I live in a city with such a progressive agenda. It is my sincere hope that Rocky Mount is becoming more receptive to black leadership, and it's growing for the benefit of all people. While all around us was rioting, looting, and destroying personal property, Rocky Mount stood as strong, and the protest organized by Cooper Blackwell and others was a great success. Despite the naysayers who believed that black people would somehow tear up and burn our fair city, our young people showed others how it should be done. I was so happy to disappoint those whites and blacks who believed it couldn't be done peacefully. And again, thanks to the city council for your continued progressive leadership. God bless.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to ask Mr. Clint Williams to the podium.
Good evening, Clint Williams, 731 Broadway Court, Nashville, North Carolina. And I spend a good deal of time and money in Rocky Mount. I'm born and raised, I'm a proud here from. And I manage this referral group called Rocky Mount Business Builders, with over thirty small business members working together to help each other build a book of business referrals. And with that, I am definitely, I consider myself a stakeholder in the best interest of Rocky Mount. And that's what I think most people want. The best interest for all people within the confines, and even those who live on the edges of the city. We want the best Rocky Mount there can be. In order to have the best Rocky Mount, it has to have integrity, honor, respect, and class. It has to be recognized by those within and without. Amongst pure cities and respected professionals, retailers, and industry who look at Rocky Mount through a Google search are going to find what? Corruption, not feasance. City council members who do this very day owe over three thousand dollars in unpaid utility bills, while honest citizens are struggling to pay theirs or regular cutoffs. Corruption for people who sat in this room and voted for themselves to waive loan payments from taxpayers to directly benefit themselves and their properties. I've seen the minister, Tasha Logan Ford, submitted the city council recommendation to waive those loans to the city council members, four of which are a part of this council today, and approved it. You voted to kick back to yourself no liability to pay back taxpayer-funded loans to yourselves. Now the North Carolina auditor has done her duty and recognized that the city has not run a tight ship. At least two mayors, three city managers, and a half dozen assistant city managers, and dozens of well-connected members of the community have known for years of the actions engaged by members of this council. It was well-publicized in 2003 that a council member owed eleven thousand dollars at that time. And Mayor Combs was just a council member himself back then, representing Ward Five. He knew it because his own employee let him know about it, his own employee who was on TV ranting and raving about it constantly. It literally has been joked about in business and recruitment meetings that this body is corrupt. I've been told to my face, eh, it happens, it's wrong, but there's nothing we can do about it. Willful, intentional apathy. Now we know that not only have the members been persisting in self-dealing to take money from the citizens, that hired the city manager who was written up for in honorable travel expenses and poor morale and questionable hiring practices in Samara. And she's been accused of the latter and directly cited by the state auditor for the former in Rocky Mountain now. Clearly, a pattern has been established at this point. What makes any of you, but especially an administrator who serves the citizens so damn special that you deserve to take, take the taxpayers' money and spend it lavishly on yourself? This is not your money. You don't run a business and take a risk, you don't generate jobs or income or have liabilities, you don't generate a dime. Government exists at the expense of the community it serves. And the last word "serve" as in servitude to the best interests of the citizens hasn't been totally forgotten. This body is so arrogant as to think the rules, literally, in audacious response to the auditor, if the rules don't apply to them...
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd call the podium Mr. Samuel Bowden. I'd call the podium Mr. Samuel Bowden.
Good evening. I don't read the government people up there. George Floyd, I think I did a peaceful protest and everything, but you still forgot the 19 murders last year, that his families lost their kids. I haven't seen nobody do no protesting about that. But when it comes to these people and celebrities all across the world, y'all might get together and protesting, but we lost a lot of George Flors last year in Rocky Mountain. No one's talking about that. Okay, number two, just like the other thing, $47,000 a councilman owed that. How y'all, how you guys gonna pay that back? We want to know that too. The people in the city want to know about that too. How y'all gonna do that? And the thing about Beth Woods, I think she did a great job, but she wouldn't have hurt us in the end. She should have brought this out in the election time. Maybe this would have been, wouldn't be sent here going on with this right now. The monument is crazy, because we got a graveyard over there, got black firefighters, AKs, people over there, Congress over there, and we ain't fixed the cemetery up. We can go over there to Battle Park where the people do a good job in the cemetery, but we can talk about the monument. The monument ain't, the monument ain't shooting back. They ain't tearing the monument down in DC. They not tearing none of that stuff down. And they consider racism and everything too, but they not tearing none of that stuff down. People have their own agenda in the city. They have a, and it's like the other thing, now, what we got? We got black cards, we got credit cards or something, people get away with this? And the citizens, my grandma 84 years old, been paying out like this for a long time. A long time. We gonna just let somebody get away with this on our watch? People gotta go down there, be humiliated, like their places, try and get extension, but they can't get them extension. They got, they get cut off. But we let, we let this individual get away with this? Are y'all really, what's up with y'all? And for us to have the majority that votes, you write down your wars, look at your wars from the while they cost our projects. Look at it. We lost PCN, we lost Domino's, we lost Maxway, we lost a lot of stuff. The while they lost Bait Gardens, Kentucky Fried Chicken McDonald's, Bakes, they lost everything. It's dark when you write down it. These kids don't care about no monument, man. These kids don't care in this city, they don't care about no monument. That's, that's y'all agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Bowden. I'd like to ask Ms. Kathleen O'Ree to the podium, please.
There's nobody here. Good evening, city administrators, and thank you for allowing me to come to speak. My address is on the paper I filled out, and I do like to exercise my right as a citizen for privacy purposes.
Yes, ma'am.
Stay there. A national pride has resounded for health, education, social, and racial justice. I thank God that our police have been a good and positive presence in our schools through their and other positive programs throughout the years. And throughout the summers, they have been with our communities for fun activities in the parks. I'm further concerned because the CO and the virus needs to cry out, and we are crying out because there seems to be some disparities that continue to manifest themselves. And though we're trying to move forward positively and together, there are still people who have their knee on our neck, and we need to get the knees off our neck so that we can breathe, so that we can go forward, so that we can prosper as a city. We have one of the best city managers we've ever had, highly educated by the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill, and her experiences have been so expansive and have prepared her for such a time as this. And I am so thankful that she has demonstrated courage and endurance and knowledge and patience, patience with us here in Rocky Mountain. I also want to say, we need a downtown hotel and park that, park that to complement our event center. My family has an upcoming family reunion, and it would be nice for us to stay close to my home instead of having to go all the way near the hospital and commute back and forth for family events. We need more jobs, we need more affordable housing, we need more unity in our community and in our city council. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Mr. John Cundy to the podium.
Good evening, council members. Yes, I remember if you declared war against the United States under the word, it was considered, that's completely, has that changed? I don't think it's changed. Speaking of monuments, after researching, when I stood here, probably years ago, when I first come up, and ACOG suggested, they had this private property location way back in the woods, and he stood right here, and he was added about it, and you couldn't see it, you stood on Timbuktu, and it was way, way back there, you had to actually make effort, actually drive there to see it, visit it. He recommended at that time, that's what happened to the statue, that's the one. Back to the domestic enemy of the United States. So once you declare war against the United States, and the United States defeat you, but you're still allowed to live here, are you still considered a domestic enemy? This is another question. We all know by the vote, Mr. Bullock, I want you to be, and go vote, spoke loud, that one, that one day, that all of you out, just watch, I'm saying, come meet. So we know how the vote took place, and we know what the staff position is on the monument. Councilman Blackwell, Councilman Knight, I want to commend you for your courage, because it just takes courage, you, what's that, quick motion. But Mr. Mayor, your position, I thank your black voters, those that voted in the office, would like to know, if the event was attacked, would you have voted to remove the monument or not?
Yeah, we don't normally answer from podium, but in this case, the answers I would have, and I've stated that clearly in a number of media outlets.
You went, voted to remove it?
Yes.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, this time I'd like to ask Mr. Lewis Turner to the podium.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I witness you in my presence, and thank you. I can, I don't commend you all, because, as you know, I'm proud of you for being with this, for the crowd. For that, and whatever's going to say. At 87, I learned patience is going to be around, I promise you, be around a little
Thank you, sir. Okay, that concludes the public petitions. We still have a public hearing that will be item nine, we will receive. We have one, one individual, Tom Harris, who'd like to speak on that. So I guess, I guess we are down at the public hearing for the budget. Now, it's important for everybody to know in the public that written comments will be accepted up to 24 hours after the public hearing. So please submit written comments to Pamela.Kasey@RockyMountainC.gov. That again is Pamela, P-A-M-E-L-A dot K-C-C-A-S-D-Y at RockyMountainC.gov. So at this point, I'll ask, should we have public hearings first, or can, maybe, Mr. Hunter, why don't you give us the proposed budget?
Thank you very much, and good evening. We are here to present the public hearing with respect to this year 2021 proposed budget. The budget has been modified based on the actions that council took during the committee of the whole meeting on the last committee, the whole meeting, the work session, which I believe was on June 4th. So I will briefly go over those changes in context to this presentation. First thing I'd like to do is just point out the summary with respect to the budget. General fund remains the same, there is no change, all adjustments made are net to no change. The Powell Bill fund was increased $40,000, and I'll explain that in a second, as was the emergency telephone fund increased slightly. All other funds remain the same as they were in the original proposed budget that council has reviewed. Again, just to talk about some key highlights with respect to the budget that we are proposing to council. We're balanced, we do, this is a balanced budget with respect to anticipated revenues and taking into consideration the impact of, the economic impact of COVID-19 pandemic. There are no increases to property tax or to retail utility rates, there's one rate recommendation that will bring your attention on adoption that's revolving, it's all the use of the transfer station. There's annual, there are 52 frozen positions, that is two down from the original proposal, those are the two positions that you asked to increase. We have eight new positions, that includes the one position that you asked to be added in the budget, and then we continue to uphold our commitment to council initiatives and also fund elements of the capital budget. The following is just a review of the changes that council, council made and were approved on January the 4th, I'm sorry, June the 4th. The primary ones, the first one that I'll make note is the PR Coordinator for Communications, Marketing, and Public Relations, this was a position add made by council. The live broadcasting in council chambers was reduced by $308,000. We reduced National Guard Armory Stabilization by $250,000, that puts it at 250, and increased the allocation for recruits to Washington High School by 250. We did, we did add $20,000 in community engagement training for police, as well as $30,000 for mental health assessments for police officers. We did also fund Grand Avenue Corridor Study, as well as storing of sand produced by residents during severe weather events. Also, in the general fund, we continue to improve, we did add $100,000 per council request to improve entrances to mobile home parks. This, this did involve, we did adjust our reimbursement from the Powell Bill for qualifying activities by $40,000. We deferred the Battle Park improvements line of general fund, which was $100,000. We did provide $50,000 for feasibility study for North Green Golf Club, as well as $50,000 for Lori Fivee's recreation study. We did unfreeze a vacant community code inspector. We did provide some funding for targeted non-residential demolition, and we also unfroze the business and downtown coordinator. These other two funds, just to briefly mention, the Powell Bill fund, this reflects the $40,000, which is pulled to increase the reimbursements in general fund for qualifying activity. There is more, I could just would increase that training, that allotment to 115,000. We also did make an adjustment to the emergency telephone fund at $4,940. This reflects the actual appropriation of allocation that we will receive from the state. That information came after the original proposed budget was presented. And then in stormwater, we did, we did offset the $50,000 that would be needed to conduct a stormwater, stormwater evaluation of the North Green area.
Are there any questions for Mr. Hunter? If that'd be the case, I guess we're opening up the public hearing portion of the budget session, and at this time I'd like to ask Mr. Harris to approach the podium.
Tom Harris, either one, Joshua Clay, Mayor, Council, people, members, and other staff. First of all, I want to thank you for passing the budget that does not have a tax increase. Job well done, thank you so much. I know y'all worked hard, and Ms. Martin, you and your staff have done a very good job putting this year's budget together. I know you worked hard, especially under the pandemic situation, and I commend you for that. I just, as a concerned citizen, I just want to mention for the public, and I sure hope that we can start seeing some, some good things happening at the event center. I spoke a couple times before, but you know, the event center of this proposed year, the total revenues that the city project is $2,089,000. Salaries and benefits, operating expenses, and other obligations total $3,173,000, and debt service $3,640,000. So that totals $6,237,000, so we have a negative balance of $4,148,000. And I hope over the next few years, as I said previously, that things can come together for the city so that we can at least cover all of the expenses of the operation of the event center, and maybe try to cover some of the debt service over the next 15, 16 years. I do have one question that I just could not find, and again, I spent quite a number of hours going through the entire budget. What was the amount of the utilities write-off in 2019 and '20, and how much is being projected for 2021? Maybe y'all can give an answer back to me sometime within the next little bit. But I think it's important for us to know exactly how much in write-offs that the city incurs each year. And one last thing, and councilman Knight said in the paper that the city has written off $21,000 over some portion of time. That's a lot of money, and I would like to see, I think the citizens would like to see what comprises most of that $21,000. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Okay, is there anybody else from the public who wishes to speak on the budget? All right, here's the song to item number 10. We'll close the public hearing portion, and we're moving to item number 10 on the agenda. Now, a little bit on your mind, everybody, before the public hearing, that written comments will be accepted up to 24 hours after this hearing. Please submit them to Pamela Casey, Pamela.Kasey@RockyMountainC.gov. Item number 10 is consideration of certification by the City Department of the sufficiency petition submitted for annexation number 316 dash, three, well, for 37, for 3786 Weatherford Street, which is contiguous, and scheduling a public hearing. The recommended action is to adopt resolution of certificate of sufficiency petition for annexation, and two, to adopt a resolution scheduling a public hearing for July 13, 2020, and to instruct the Department of Development Services to prepare a feasibility study. Do I have a motion?
Still move.
Moved by Councilman Joyner, seconded by Councilman Miller. Is there a need for discussion on this item? All right, being on, I'll ask for a voice vote from the court.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joyner?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Daughtry?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
And Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 11 is consideration of proposal from the John Hackney Agency for Property and Lawability Insurance Services for fiscal year 2021. The primary carrier is Travelers Insurance Company, its insurance program not to exceed one point four five million dollars, is an increase of a hundred and eleven thousand dollars, or an eight percent increase overall. The recommended action is to approve the proposal. Do I have a motion?
Certainly.
Councilman Daughtry, seconded by Joyner. Is there a need for discussion on item eleven? Hearing none, I'll ask, uh, for a voice vote.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joyner? Walker?
Yes.
Daughtry?
Yes.
Bullock? And Miller?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Item twelve on our agenda is consideration of applications for the following new taxi ride licenses, A for Roosevelt London, Jr., and for B Gerald Lonell Burn, Lonell Bernie. The recommended action is to approve the issuance of new taxi ride licenses as recommended, and authorize the city clerk to execute, execute the same on behalf of the city. Is there, is there a motion? Moved by, uh, Councilman Joyner, is there a second? Seconded by, uh, Blackwell. Uh, is there a need for discussion on this matter? Hearing none, I'll call for the voice vote.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joyner?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Daughtry?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
And Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item thirteen is consideration of the execution of delegation of authority form required by the Public Transportation Division of the North Carolina Department of Transportation in connection with a grant contract for Tar River Transit. It authorizes Amy Stanton, our finance director, Nikki Gravinas, accounting manager, and Katie Pay, accounted to submit reimbursement requests, budget revisions, budget amendments, and period performance extensions. The recommended action is to authorize the mayor to execute the delegation of authority form on behalf of the city.
Some move.
Some move, I guess, on Miller? Second, is that Walker?
Is there?
All right. Uh, is there a need for discussion on this item? Hearing none, I'll ask for the vote.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joyner?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Daughtry?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
And Miller?
Yes.
Okay, brings us to item fourteen, which is the consideration of request to apply for the Land and Water Conservation Fund grant through the North Carolina Department of Cultural Resources to assist with battle park renovations. Five hundred thousand dollars requires a fifty percent match for every dollar received. Note that the grant is a different grant than was requested at the May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty city council meeting. The recommended action is to authorize staff to submit application on behalf of the city, to authorize the mayor, city clerk, and city attorney to execute any required documentations, cert certifications, and subsequent grant agreement on behalf of the city. Is there a motion?
Second.
Moved by Blackwell, seconded by Daughtry. Is there a need for discussion on item fourteen? Hearing none, I'll ask for the vote.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joyner?
Yes.
Yes.
Daughtry?
Yes.
Bullock? And Miller?
Yes.
Okay, the final item is item fifteen, which is a, yes, sir?
Um, so she said final item, but we do have a resolution, uh, this before us. Is that correct?
I think we voted on that and passed it.
Okay.
You asking me to read it?
Well, I didn't.
I may have read the record, but.
No, okay.
All right, well, let's go through item fifteen, and I'll, I'll bring that in the meeting.
Well, then you said that we passed.
We did. So item fifteen, there are the appointments for various boards and vacancies that we have. I'd like to note for everybody here who are watching, we do have personal history forms on the first floor, the public is invited to apply to serve on a board, commission, or committee. And we have a number of people who are asking to be reappointed, but I think that super court has suggested that we wait until after, um, the telegram has run the story, is that correct? Did I misunderstand that? Right. Would you like to? Okay, well, then I will, uh, look at city council. I don't know if you guys have this memo of, of folks who've indicated a willingness to continue to serve in various capacities. Um, I don't know if it's necessary to listen to. Go ahead, Councilman Miller.
Thank you. I support the reappointment of the Historic Preservation Commission, um, Ms. Josie Davis, Mr. Raymond Gant, Jr., and Mr. Sam Johnson, and I want to thank them and all of us who continue to serve past their term. And obviously, these folks continue to serve without faith, they never owe faith, I've been served with love that can't be. And the other ones who are up for reappointment, who's a reappointment, sorry, it would be, um, the Lingwood Wains for the Human Relations Commission, towards Seven, and I would leave to Mr. Bullock, and, um, this is the other would be Mr. Daughtry, should work out the equal disservice board appointment.
Well, I have a motion then to reappoint members of the Historic Preservation Committee at the Human Relations Commission as listed, is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Blackwell. Is there a need for discussion on these two boards? Hearing none, I'll ask for a vote.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joyner?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Daughtry?
Yes.
Bullock? And Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, uh, reappointment for, um, Councilwoman Miller to, uh, I believe it's the, uh, step, step, thank you, step board, I second.
I have a motion to, uh, reappoint Councilwoman Miller to the step board by, um, Councilman Daughtry, seconded by Councilman, uh, Blackwell. Is there a need for discussion? Being none, we'll ask for the vote, uh, hearing none, ask for a voice vote.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joyner?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Daughtry?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes, and thank you for your confidence.
That leaves the Utility Service Review Board, is that something we want to table until the next meeting, or is that something anybody wants to, uh, to suggest nominations or, or continuums? It's on the Utility Service Review Board, um... Okay. Okay, well then... Okay, very well. I mean, okay, so are there any other nominations that we have, um, for these various appointments and commissions? All right, being none?
Mr. Lit?
Yes, sir, Councilman Walker.
I don't have an appointment at the time, but I wanted to, uh, I probably should have committed the whole, but I wanted to see if we could, uh, have a time where we could revisit, uh, some of the youth programming. I thought about it pretty late today. I sent out a email, it was rather late, uh, after committing the whole, but I wanted to see if we could revisit that, just to see how we could package our, uh, summer program.
That feels, feels more inappropriate to me. That feels more inappropriate to me, probably fits really better, uh, committed the whole with, uh, Mayor Pro Tim, it's an agreement.
Well, Councilwoman Walker, we, well, brought that question up during the session, and city manager said due to COVID, she didn't know if, um, jobs would be available for, um, summer youth, and so we're just, I guess we're waiting to see how the COVID pandemic is gonna play out. Is that correct, city manager?
Yes, sir, it is correct.
Okay, I understand.
It worries. Uh, call for new business?
I still.
Councilman Knight?
I, um, unless I was in the daze, typically I'm not. The resolution, uh, seat of Rocky Mount Council.
It, it was, it was item six, consideration of minutes and recommendation for the budget review sessions. The action was to approve for the removal of the storage Confederate statue and the resolution that we had drawn off, uh, and to adopt the resolution against racial injustice and the declaration of Black Lives Matter. However, if you, we'd like to add an emphasis point. Yes, sir. I believe everybody here believes that we did it. Yes, sir, Councilman Bullock. Very well, uh, is there a call for new business? Being none, I hear a motion to adjourn. Um, we're Councilman Blackwell, seconded by Councilman Joyner. I guess we have to throw a voice vote for this, but I certainly, clerk?
Councilmember Knight?
Who we voting on? I missed it, I missed it tonight. I ain't gonna vote on that. You just hit your gavel, that means you're being voted on.
If six is, yes. That's almost right.